On Wednesday, September 20th, please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for a brief moment of silent prayer.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, we're gonna have a roll call. Ward one, Ms. Gamble's here. Ward two, Mr. Richardson's here. Ward three, Mr. LaFontaine's here. And ward four, Mr. Clark is absent. He's still out of the country for a work project. Under Mayor's comments, a motion to amend and finalize the agenda with the addition of items numbered D under the Mayor's comments and item seven I under Board Business and eight F, one and eight N under the Consent Agenda section of the agenda.
I'll move.
Ward three moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Item B, proclamation to declare October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
A proclamation by the city of Wavon, Mississippi, whereas on average every two minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer, making the disease the most common cancer among women in the U.S. And whereas it is estimated that 2,610 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer and 470 will die in the state of Mississippi during 2023, according to the American Cancer Society. And whereas men also develop breast cancer, and according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, about one out of every hundred breast cancers diagnosed in the U.S. is found in men. Whereas overall, the average risk of a woman in the U.S. developing breast cancer sometime in her life is about 13%. This means there is a one in eight chance she will develop breast cancer. Every woman is at risk for breast cancer, even if she has no family history of the disease. And women over the age of 45 are at greater risk for being diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas a mammogram is the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms, that cancer can be seen or felt. About 30% of the women aged 40-plus years were not able to get a mammogram screening for the past two years in the state of Mississippi from the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance System 2020. And whereas regular screening has been ranked as one of the most cost-effective screening interventions available to identify breast cancer early, reducing breast cancer deaths by 26% for every thousand women screened among women aged 50 to 74 years. And the average survival rate for women in the U.S. with non-metastatic breast cancer is 91%, with more than 3.8 million breast cancer survivors. And whereas throughout the month of October, women are encouraged to make a renewed commitment to follow recommended screening guidelines to make a mammogram appointment. And whereas throughout the month of October, public officials, organizations, and health practitioners in the city are encouraged to use this opportunity to promote awareness about breast cancer and the proper breast health. And whereas observing Breast Cancer Awareness Month during the month of October would provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Now therefore, I, J. Trepandy, Mayor of the City of Wavon, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Wavon and encourage our citizens to wear pink ribbons in recognition of breast cancer and in honor of women who are now courageously fighting the battle or who've lost the battle with breast cancer. And do further encourage women to consult with their healthcare providers about regular screening and to promote early detection of breast cancer by having regular clinical breast examinations and mammograms and practicing monthly breast awareness. Is there anyone here to accept? No?
Okay. All right, moving on to item C, under Mayor's comments, proclamation to declare September 17th through September 23rd, 2023 as Constitution Week. My designated reader.
Proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, J. Trepandy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Wavon in the state of Mississippi, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness hereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wavon to be affixed this 20th day of September, the year of our Lord, 2023.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Item D, discuss recycling services drop-off at back of City Hall. Cost to City will be $49,200 for fiscal year 2024. For those people in the audience, the county has paid for the recycling bins in the past, and they took it out of their budget this year. We found out about it yesterday. We kind of knew about it, but we got the memo yesterday, and I'm sorry, Monday. And, you know, we did not have $49,200 budgeted for fiscal year 2024. Any other discussion?
No, Mayor, I mean, in my opinion, we don't have anything budgeted for it. I mean, there's no way to, we're not gonna find $49,000 in the budget.
You know, in the old days, when I was younger, companies used to pay us for recycling items that we turned in. Now we have to pay companies to recycle. In this memo, to recycle what, the cardboard and the things that we collect in the back, we are charged $1,000 per ton. Unfortunately, we don't have the money in the budget. To put it in the trash collection, garbage can, whatever you want to call it, and bring it to the landfill, we're only charged $37 per ton. So, I mean, it's a big difference, $1,000 per ton versus $37 per ton. They're working on a program, if they can get 1,500 people countywide, to sign up where you can have recycling picked up at your home. But it's $33 a month for anybody that wants to join. And they have to get 1,500 people to sign up. That's where we stand right now. I'll be going to another Solid Ways meeting tomorrow afternoon at 1:00. But Diamond Head, Bay St. Louis, they met last night and have decided to do away with their recycling bins also.
Mayor, do you need a motion from us to?
Actually, you would only need a motion if you wanted to contract with them for it. But since you don't have an existing contract, you don't have anything in place, there's nothing really to vote. To vote, you would only need to vote if you wanted to approve it.
One other thing that we need to, because, you know, there are some people who recycle, who are very adamant about it, and understandably so. The problem is, if, for instance, we were to keep ours, we know everybody else has eliminated theirs. If we keep ours, all those other people are gonna come put their recycling in our bin. Our $49,000 is gonna go through the roof. It's gonna be exponentially higher than that. So honestly, and the reality of it is, we don't have a choice. We can't keep recycling if everybody else is going, has eliminated it.
And amongst the three cities, Diamond Head, Bay St. Louis, and Wavon, Wavon was the most underutilized recycling bin. So the other cities are looking at fees even higher than what we'd have to pay to keep that recycled bin back there. Okay, any further discussion? All right, moving on to Alderman's comments. Ward one, Ms. Gamble.
I just have one. Josh, what is the status on the situation on Keller Street? You know which one I'm talking about?
Accessory structure?
Yes.
Yeah, I went and seen her a week or so ago. She's supposed to come in. When her son came in town this week, she hasn't come in, so I'll contact him more. Follow up.
What's our plan? I mean, what?
She, her son built a building different than the permit was issued for.
Yeah, I know. So I mean, what?
The next step would be, lost out work. And then she comes in office and revises the permit to fit what she's doing. If it's not in compliance with ordinance, then she either has to tear it down or ask for a variance.
Well, it's a house.
That's what the ordinance says.
It's, I mean, it's a... Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's accessory structure.
It's an accessory, right.
It's not finished on the inside, there's chairs.
But she has...
I'll have pictures if you want to see them right now.
No, 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 I have them. I've got them on my phone.
Inside the building?
Oh, no, I don't have inside. But my question is this, so, um, she's already got a permit.
Yeah.
So she's got a permit for an accessory structure, which can never be two-story. So since the accessory structure that was supposed to be one-story is now a two-story apartment, so to speak.
I haven't seen the evidence of being a apartment.
Well, whatever it is, it's two-story and it can't be two-story.
Well, I don't know about it not being two-story, but the height of it, the height, can't be over 15 foot. I don't know about the two-story.
Yeah, it doesn't say in the ordinance that...
Says two-story?
No, it's a single-story structure.
She's out of compliance, so.
So, so my point is, my point is, she's already got... She's in major violation of the ordinance. She's in major violation of her permit. She's totally outside her permit. So I can't see where there's any other permit that's even, that she could even come ask for to do something retrospect.
Right.
It's gonna have to be brought to compliance. I can't see any other way. Do you?
No, I mean, first off, it would probably, if they did it without a permit, probably at some point, go ahead.
They got a permit, but they built something different than the permit and what was approved by the city to build.
So Ronnie, what's your recommendations for the next step?
I mean, she can apply for a variance, but y'all made it crystal clear.
It's never gonna pass.
That's not, that's not an option any longer. And you can amend the variance, but I don't, I don't see any way of doing that. She's gonna basically, the practical reality is, she's gonna have to tear down and bring it into compliance with what was approved by the board. I mean, she's gonna have to demo what she did.
I don't remember the dimensions of that. What was the size of that?
I think it's 20 by 20?
I don't remember the exact dimensions.
It seemed like it was smaller than that. It seemed like it was like 10 or 12.
But they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to tear down or demolish.
Yeah, they did. They came before us in February.
For what?
For a variance, for that, for that.
Size, subject, huh?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't remember if it was a variance or conditional use, but it may have been a conditional use to go a little bit hot, more than 500 square feet. But, yeah, yeah, but, um...
So they're gonna have to bring it into compliance. They're gonna have to tear down the second story.
It's pretty much the only option.
Yeah.
It's either I tell her that and she does it, or she tries to apply for a variance, which...
Variance will never pass.
Well, don't we have, don't we have stipulations in the ordinance when you're in violation? That, I mean, we can utilize...
She's already in violation, yeah.
Right, but, but there are penalties in the ordinance that we've never, ever used, so...
The most drastic of which is, in this situation, is no, the most drastic consequence is tearing it down and coming into compliance.
We'd use that penalty anytime.
Well, I'm ready for it because I'm just so tired of being taken advantage of. You know, we do ordinance, I mean, we set an ordinance, we give people variances, and they still go do whatever floats the boat. I'm just over it. So, there's one more. What about 544 Meadow Lane?
Yeah, yeah, the board voted on that to be fixed by a contractor. Hasn't gone out for bid.
To what?
It hasn't gone out for bid yet.
In October of last year, they declared it amenas and that it should, that for you to go in it and inspect it and to board it, board all the windows up and everything. October of last year. And the neighbors are calling. Not, not the one neighbor that I know real good, but other neighbors that I don't know well are calling me about it. They're, they're getting really antsy over it.
Have the inspections been done?
I haven't inspected the inside. You can get in touch with the owner. I've issued a citation for this house before. Person lived in Grass Street, over in Idlewood.
Is somebody paying the taxes? Well, then there's gotta be somebody that knows what's going on. Find out who's paying the taxes and contact them. That should be the easiest thing, wouldn't you think? Could we do that?
Before, before we demo it or go out for bid, we need to confirm that the inspections were done and...
Well, we have to get a right of entry, so if we can't do it, the property owner...
You have authority.
You, yeah.
You have authority to go on.
The board declared it amenas and gave you the authority to do it in October.
I mean, I'm fine with that now, if that's your opinion, but with the previous attorneys, I did not have authority for that.
For code enforcement?
You had to get a warrant.
You absolutely have authority to go on.
Right of entry from the judge, what was his opinion was?
I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to get with you.
I'm good with it. Well, that's probably one of the reasons why.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Ms. Gamble?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I just had, Beau, I see the contractors mobilized, Jordan River for underground underwater. Under the river pipe, can you give us an update and is that going as planned?
No, sir. As of yesterday, they pulled off because Hancock Utility Water couldn't locate their line. So once they relocate their line, that's when they're gonna start thinking tomorrow. I haven't heard a thing today.
Okay.
That's what we're standing on.
So we're waiting on utility authority to locate their line?
Yes.
They have a 16-inch water line going through there.
Right.
That needs to be located.
And you would think they would have been able to locate before all this started, you know? They just don't.
Was it because it wasn't in the same place as the Asbills?
I'm not sure.
I don't know about that one.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you, Beau.
That's all I have on the 16-inch line.
Mr. LaFontaine?
Yeah, a couple of things, Mayor. Beau was giving me a rundown on Kill Wavon cutoff. We're still waiting for one more quote.
Yes.
Could we possibly have that by the next meeting, or if not, can we call a meeting?
Oh, yes, we should have it by the end of the week.
If not, can we call a meeting to go ahead and get something done with that? And, or if we get it ahead of time, can we call it to get something moving on it? And then also, Raquel wanted to come up and talk to everybody about Halloween. It's getting that time of year again.
Okay. Raquel?
Just an annual thing.
Just making sure.
You have to say your name.
Just, I'm assuming we're still gonna do the Halloween. I mean, it's mainly a city bunch and I don't really do anything. But do you need the roads closed? The driveway, so they can still get in the incubator into bourgeois at like 8:00 a.m.?
Okay.
So that way you can still use bourgeois and you can come up to the beach to the incubator, but...
You have to go through the parking lot? You would have to go through the parking lot at a business center?
Yeah, for the barnets to set up.
Okay.
Takes them all day.
Right.
And then who is the contact at City Hall? Who would I give with like?
Janita. Janita.
Okay, because I know they have a flyer and we just updated the year, so I need to give them Janita.
What's the time of the event?
We do 5:30 to 8:00, if that's okay. I mean, it's y'all.
Okay.
We came up with the idea of me and David and Paul that 20 years ago, but y'all make do everything, so.
Right.
I mean, the city, city workers, so.
And it's gonna be on the 31st?
Yes.
And then you deliver, the city prints up the flyers and you bring them through schools?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. She does those flyers and then we drop them off at the North Bay and whatever.
And then just advertise it on the Facebook and stuff?
Can we put it on the city's Facebook page asking for vendors?
Okay.
Not just the Halloween thing. Ask not vendors to donate, to come give out candy.
Give out candy.
There's, you know, no fees or anything, just set up.
And we're not selling anything.
We don't sell anything. We don't charge anything. It's what, they bring their own candy and just give out trick-or-treats, just trick-or-treat.
Yeah, we don't...
All we're doing is providing the venue.
Yeah, we don't bring the venue, we don't bring vendors and charge.
And the city, they do barricade the roads and then like the police and fire do their thing, so. But the city workers and the trash cans, so.
We should all, I said all the minutes.
Thank you. Hey, they fill them up.
I'll send out, through email and...
Please do.
And on the, my social media to deal with it.
And I know, um, whoever, someone has the contacts for like all places up here.
Put it on the first meeting in October.
Change everything. They usually just send a mass email out saying, hey, we appreciate y'all coming and donating, you know, set up a booth. It's, they can just set up wherever. There's no rhyme or reason, just come out. That's all we want, is for people to come out and give.
Do you remember what year you started this?
We can't remember if it was 11 or 12.
I think it was 11.
So y'all took office in December of 10.
Yes, it was 11.
And I think we did it, we put that following?
It was.
I think so. So 2011. It kind of self-do's itself, you know, we just need the city workers. They do their, you know, their stuff, but... Our main thing is getting people just to come out and give out candy.
Putting the word out.
Seems like we started it, now everybody's doing it, too.
Yeah.
It's a safe area for kids to trick-or-treat, and y'all know how many kids come, so.
Yeah, lots.
Did you bring any samples tonight?
So I just wanted, people have been asking if we were gonna do it, and I, I mean, as soon as you were, but I just wanted to give it up.
All right, thank you, Raquel.
Any questions, anything?
Thanks.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
All righty, public comments. Ms. Beverly Freiter want to talk on recycling? Well, let me see that. Did I read the wrong name? Wow.
Come on up, Beverly.
Woo, I don't know where I read. Come on up, Ronnie. I'm sorry.
You don't look like Beverly.
There's no resemblance. She has a lot more hair than me. Just real quickly on the recycling. I saw it on the agenda for Bay St. Louis yesterday morning, so I went to the Bay St. Louis meeting yesterday. And yes, they are pulling out their bins at the end of the month. They aren't continuing on. Same information that the mayor shared with us. But I shared with them and that there is, you always hear, particularly at the Board of Supervisors meeting, there's no money in recycling now. There is cardboard. There's big money in recycling cardboard. Claiborne Hill and Wavon, I've spoken to both of them. I've spoken to the manager at Wavon.
Walmart. Wavon Walmart.
Excuse me, Walmart and Claiborne Hill. Because I've seen all the cardboard stacked up out there, pallets and everything else. And it is a big, big revenue source for them. And very little manpower, because the outfit that they supply, the equipment, the vans and all and whatnot. And, uh, Liz's brother, you know, he's a family member at Claiborne Hill, and he said it's a big revenue source. So I'm just thrown out at the solid waste, this is something that solid waste could look at. You know, we're moving on, we're evolving in recycling. Everybody gets cardboard packages now. Cardboard is used quite a bit, and there's, there's money in recycling cardboard. So that could be a revenue source for the cities to apply to litter control, parks and recreation or whatever, so.
We'll bring it up. We'll bring it up tomorrow. Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, moving on to board business. Uh, item A, motion to approve the depository docket of claims paid and unpaid dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. In the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll move.
Ward three moves. Ward one seconds. Any discussion? Let's vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three. Motion carries three zero. Motion to approve the operating utilities docket of claims paid and unpaid dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. In the amount of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Um, second.
Ward one moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three. Motion carries three zero. Motion to discuss and consider approval of a lease and service agreement between the City of Waveland and Safe Haven Baby Boxes, Inc.
I'll move to table this to the first meeting in October, please.
Which one?
They're, they are raising the money to pay for this so that um, when it comes time for us to sign the contract, it'll already be paid for.
All right.
I got, I got some questions on it though before we tell you.
Sure.
All right, let's, let's get a second.
I don't want a second table on it yet. I just want to discuss it first. And then, is that good, Raquel?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, one thing was nothing was discussed whenever they would hear about the eleven thousand dollars, correct?
No, they did.
I don't remember anything about eleven thousand dollars. I know they said that they was gonna have the first year, which was the three hundred dollars.
No, that was, that was the renewal. That's what the annual fee was, was the three hundred.
Said they had the one-year annual fee.
Yeah, and um, they also, I don't know if the figure was on the paper that was handed out. But um, it all told, it comes to thirteen thousand. So there's like, um, or it may be twelve thousand. I think it's eleven thousand and then there's a, a thousand dollar for something else. Um, but all of that is gonna be raised money. That's, that's the initial cost of what it, what it's gonna cost to buy it. We've already got um, people who, I say we, um, Monica. Already has people who have volunteered their time to install it and do all that stuff, so that's all free. Um, and we, she's already started getting donations for the, towards the payment of the uh, of the entire project. So that's why we will look in the table it so that, give her time to, to raise the money that it's gonna take to pay for the entire project.
Ronnie, have you had a chance to review this and?
The contract until?
Yes.
Yeah, so the contract that was actually sent, and I'm providing copies to everyone, the contract actually sent didn't reflect donations and in fact, put the responsibility on the city. So I contacted the people back and told them that was not the arrangement. They had indicated to me, they do have a different contract that involves third-party payors that they would send, but they have not sent that. And then when they sent the second contract to me, it was basically the same as the first one. So I wrote them again, and I think you guys have copies of that, um, and I know I forwarded them, saying you got to send me the agreement that reflects the presentation and what was approved. But I haven't received that yet to date.
And what's the renewal in five years?
Hold on, I'll pull it up.
I think it said five hundred.
Maybe.
So there is, hold on, let me, I'll get you the actual document. I had forwarded copies, um, but I will pull it up here so I don't misquote anything. But it had a list, one of the pages attached as an exhibit is a list of costs. And it had a three hundred dollar fee, a five hundred dollar fee, and then um, one separate set of costs, one-time costs of around eleven thousand, and then there were other costs that could potentially reach twenty thousand. Um, but those weren't fixed. So the potential under the contract that was sent, which is different as Rhonda was explaining, um, didn't reflect that, just that three hundred dollar. That was the issue that came up. And it made it a binding obligation of the city if no funds were collected. So until such time as we know the funds are collected, there is no agreement for you guys to sign to approve.
And, and you're gonna have that in a contract stating that it's, that the cost is on the?
What you approved was to move forward with potentially, because she did set, she did mention the three hundred and she did qualify, they hope to have it. But that the most that it would cost the city could potentially be the three hundred.
Right.
That's what y'all approved. So the contract will have to match what you approved. We can't do a contract unless y'all take a different action.
And then in five years?
Different than what you approved.
Five years, it's uh, will you get that amount for us as well?
So that was, five years was another issue. Uh, what they drafted, um, their standard agreement was for five years. We can't contract, as you all know, more than four years. That was one of the issues I raised back to Joe.
But there's nothing to prohibit us from, from getting, raising donation dollars for that as well, right?
For any renewals?
For, right, for any of it.
No. You can, you can fund a hundred percent of it through donations. The problem is, is making sure you have those donations and making sure the agreement reads that way, so you don't get stuck if the donations don't come through.
And, and those unfi- those costs that you mentioned that weren't fixed.
You can get donations for hu- any of the costs.
Right, and, and they've, they've already done so. And um, I spoke with her yesterday and she's already getting donations and the donations are being, the, their people are making checks straight to Safe Haven Baby Box. They're making them straight to them, so it'll go straight to the amount, you know, whatever. So if they don't raise, if, let's say they raise ten thousand dollars and there's still a thousand dollars left to be raised. And we decide we don't wanna put that extra thousand dollars up to put that baby box in. They can take that money and put that baby box somewhere else in the county if we don't.
They could put it anywhere. They have an agreement with any entity.
Exactly. But it, people, they are specifying on their checks that it's for Hancock County.
Okay.
For Waveland and then Hancock County.
Make a donation, and I don't wanna give advice to that nonprofit up there, but if they're making specific donations for a specific purpose, the recipient of that can only use it for that purpose.
That's exactly what the purpose is.
Unless that donor.
Exactly. That's exactly why they're doing it that way. Yes.
And then another question I had on it, provider agrees to maintain the safety device in good working order, the cost of which ought to be borne by the provider.
Yeah, that could be part of the up to twenty, that's, those are additional costs above the eleven thousand, the five hundred and the three hundred.
In addition to, in addition to installation and the power and all that stuff that we've already addressed.
So three years from now, if something happens to it, it's on us to fix it.
Okay.
Or, or if we've only got a contract for four years and something happens to it, we tell them to take it back.
Well, you could tell them to take it back and not, if you don't make the repairs, but.
And I understand completely one hundred percent about the baby box, but what I don't understand is how big is this thing for eleven thousand dollars? I mean, has it got central air and everything or?
I haven't seen one.
I mean.
All right, the mo- the motion on the table is to table this by Alderman Gamble until October third meeting.
And then, can I get one more?
Sure.
For liability of the box, will that fall under our insurance or?
So we will have insurance coverage, but there is, there is some uh, exemptions or immunity from liability for first responders, which is why you see them trying to put it in a fire station or somewhere for situations like this. So they can respond, they can handle it, they can refer. So we don't have any exposure outside of what's already covered by insurance.
I just don't want us to be on the hook for up to twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
So like.
And by October third, we should have the new con- some clarification on the contract.
We'll know either yes or no, one way or another.
And we'll have, we'll have a better idea how much money's coming in on it too.
Okay, do I have a second on table on this until October third?
I'll second.
Alderman, Alderman Richardson ta- uh, seconds. Any further discussion? All right, the vote is to table it. Uh, ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
All right, motion is tabled to October third by vote of three zero. Motion to approve contract renewal with Civic Plus LLC. Uh, that's Munich Code Web Premium Subscription Renewal at a cost of thirty-three hundred dollars. This is a, a website, a web. The people who host our website.
I'll move.
Ward two, second.
Ward three moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Um, when we got this website to start with, Munich Code, um, it was very expensive. The reason it's thirty-three hundred dollars a year is because there's all kinds of add-ons to it that we don't use. We can do a regular website a lot cheaper than this if we don't intend to use all those add-ons that we have on that, on that website. Um, I've been hearing, I, I know for at least, and I know you guys have, at least two years before um, I was ever elected, that they were gonna put the ordinances on the website that Munich Code was gonna do that. That's never been done.
That is supposed to be coming in October. We've, we have it in writing.
That's a separate scope and a whole separate thing that y'all paid for than just this.
Right.
And in fact, um, y'all already paid for all of that work.
Yeah.
And that, the, that person who is doing that has assured us they will be completed by, I think he said mid-October, but I had written down end of October, but.
Okay, so my question for that is, if they're gonna put, if Munich Code's gonna put all of our ordinances online and make them searchable, um, do we have to have this subscription for this website for them to be able to do that? Because I noticed in other areas that they do it, that it's, they, some of them use the Munich Code website and some of them don't.
They don't ha- so, two completely separate projects started out with two completely separate companies. So the short answer to your, the code project can be uploaded to this website regardless of who hosts the website. Regardless of maintains the website as part of that original scope. It's just pure coincidence that those two companies were bought and consolidated now, so it's the left hand putting it in the right. But the original scope and then what you paid for was for them to upload it to the city's website regardless of who's hosting.
Okay. So what, if we approve this tonight and we decide, we look at, at all of the add-ons and everything that it's costing and we decide that we wanna go with something a lot less expensive, can, i- is there anything in the contract to prohibit us? A sixty-day notice?
There's sixty-day cancellation provision in there, that you could cancel it. And if you do cancel it and decide to use somebody else to host your website, that still doesn't, that doesn't negate the obligations under the separate project for them to upload those, that codification.
Okay. Well, um, I, I, my recommendation is my, I hope that, was it you that made the motion?
Uh, Shane.
Shane did. Um, maybe if, if y'all don't mind, we could amend that motion to approve it tentative on reviewing what all the add-ons are and everything. And if we're not gonna use them and we can go a lot cheaper, we do. It, and that may be even with Munich Code. We, you know, if we're not gonna use all those things, because I know there's something that does agendas and all kinds of things, minutes and everything. If we're not gonna use that, then either they back off on the price since we don't use those features or we find something less expensive.
The agenda and the minutes in the uh, video are totally different package than this. And that's another thirty-eight hundred dollars, and we've decided that we're not gonna go for that. We're gonna continue to, to do it the way we're doing it now.
So the thirty-three hundred is just the basic website?
Hosting the website, which is pretty expensive. The city attorney and I spoke to earlier today about finding an alternative. But for now, we need to, to, to move, you know, move this forward.
Pretty extensive website. My website's less than two hundred dollars a year.
Right. Yep.
Well, but we need a website to keep going, because even if you go get somebody else, it's gonna take them a while to build your website.
We need it active until we transition.
Right.
I don't know if anybody knows, but the website was down for a while today and um, we got a lot of phone calls. So a lot of people do look at the website. So until we can transition to a, a less expensive company.
And you're looking into that?
Hmm?
You're looking into that?
Yes.
So we need to, uh, what you're saying is we need to approve.
If you just approve till. You could approve it in one motion and then you can direct us to find alternatives.
This sixty-day notice would give time to find another.
We, it would trigger the sixty-day notice at that time.
All right, any other discussion? Let's vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three. Motion carries three zero. Item E, motion to authorize mayor to send activation request letter to MDOT for the St. Joseph Street sidewalk project and authorize the mayor to execute all documents as required by MDOT. So this project's kinda on hold because we didn't get all the funding we wanted from Gulf Regional. Um, Gulf Regional suggested, and so has our, has our engineer that we go ahead and activate it with MDOT. Uh, that's the first step that we have to get going before we can actually request it, the other twenty percent in funding. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Ward one moves. Ward three seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three. Motion carries three zero. Item F, motion to authorize advertisement for construction bids related to Tyler, Ruby and Foye Streets repair project. This money is in the budget um, to repair these three streets.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ward three moves. Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three. Motion carries three zero. Item G, motion to approve Mississippi stewardship grant, applications for improvement to Elmwood Bourgeois Park and authorize mayor's signature.
I'll move.
Ward two moves.
Second.
Ward one seconds. Any discussion? We applied for this last year and didn't get it, so uh, there's more money put into the bucket by the, the state legislature, so we're applying again.
Kind of improvements are we looking for?
We're looking at adding a couple of more uh, pickleball courts, a couple of more pavilions and some more playground equipment for the kids.
Okay.
So, uh, one of the problems we have now with that only one pavilion, they get out there at five o'clock in the morning and try to reserve it for a birthday party.
Yep.
So I don't know if three will be enough, but at least we'll have three if we get, get this grant. So do we have a, a motion?
There was Bobby and Alderman.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Item H, motion to exclude liability coverage currently with Mississippi Municipal Service Company from the Cadence Insurance coverage agreed for the City of Waveland at the eight sixteen twenty-three board meeting. This at the recommendation of Mr. Justin Latta and Cadence Insurance, who recommends our liability, liability codes to stay with Mississippi Municipal Service Company.
I'll move.
Ward three moves.
Second.
Ward one, seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Item I, ratify mayor's declaration of class three emergency related to two-inch gas line uh, in front of Sonic Drive on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move.
I'll second it.
Ward one moves. Ward three seconds. Um, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Planning and zoning, there's nothing on the agenda tonight for planning and zoning. Uh, consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda items as numbered A through N.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ward three moves. Ward two seconds.
We need to put a name in D.
Oh, yeah, you guys. We need to come up with a name.
We should probably, oh, I don't think we've even discussed it. I don't have any. Does anybody?
I've asked a few people and I haven't come up with anybody.
Okay. Motion to approve the following items, A through N excluding D.
Move.
Ward one moves.
I'll second.
Ward two seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
What was that one?
Motion carries D, three zero. Uh, there's no reason for executive. Motion carries D, three zero. Uh, there's no reason for executive session.
When was it made the motion on D? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Um, Rhonda and Bobby.
So, we just wanna hold on to that until the third or?
Yes.
Okay, well, yeah.
D, it was excluded, so you can, if you wanna bring it back up.
Yeah, well, it was excluded, but that's why I'm saying, do we need to make a motion?
We'll put it back on the third.
Okay.
Well, I, let me, let me get this clear. Um, the con, the whole consent agenda was motioned by Lafontaine Richardson, so we really don't need another, unless it's to exclude?
The motion was to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D, which is excluded and held to the October third.
Oh, okay.
I do have one question on what we had just approved on the holiday schedule. Are these all state holidays?
Yes, yes. It's the same exact schedule as last year.
Which is the state's schedule?
It's the state recommended holiday schedule.
Is the question.
Correct, Raquel? It's a state holiday schedule. You all prepare it again.
All right.
I didn't think Good Friday was a state holiday.
What is?
Good Friday? That's not a state holiday though.
You, it, yeah, you have the option. It's, it's approved by the state to be taken if you elect to take it.
I thought we used to give up, the city used to give up Mardi Gras to take Good Friday. Is what's, was what's always happened in the past.
If the board approves it, you can do that.
So, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be state holiday as long as the board approves it.
If, as, but the board has to approve it.
Okay. I'm good, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it.
It's a, it's a state approved day that the board can select, I guess is the best way to word that.
All right. No further discussion. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward two seconds. Meeting is adjourned.